Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the this evening's hearing to order for Tuesday, November 28th. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present tonight, and our first order of business will be a pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all please stand if you can.
...............................................................
So, before we get into the open public forum, I'm going to ask that if you have a cellphone with you, please either mute it, or turn it off, or turn it on to vibrate if you have to take a call. Would ask that you'd step out into the foyer, take the call out there, so that you're not interfering with the ability of your neighbor to hear any of the testimony given tonight. So, the next item of business, the open public forum. I only have one person signed up for the public forum. This is an opportunity that we provide for folks to share any thoughts, or comments, or suggestions to the Board of County Commissioners on any item that is not on the hearing, or the agenda for tonight. So, if you want to provide testimony on something other than what's on the agenda tonight, this is the time to do it. We'll also have an open public forum at the end of the meeting. If you want to provide testimony on any of the hearing items, I'll be providing that opportunity when each item comes up. So, at this point, I have Randy Pentaluna. If you would come, so during the public forum and all of the public testimony, you have three minutes to share your thoughts with the board. We'll be timing you, and when you hear the buzzer go off, know that your time is up, and just kind of try and wrap up your thoughts. And with that, you're on.
............... Anyway, I'm gonna skip the first question I had, and I did have a question considering Chad Coles and Al reference to last time. And Craig's not here, so this is ridiculous. When a drainage system is constructed, is a side slope, when a drainage, when a drainage, public drainage system is constructed, is a side slope and lateral support of the side slope considered part of the drainage system?
So, this is an opportunity for you to provide comments. This is not a dialogue, so if you can just ask your questions and stuff, we can have staff get back with you with an answer. Okay?
Last thing I question is...
Okay, so Mr. Coles is our county road engineer, and he's the one that is probably most qualified to be able to answer your question. And so, Chad, if you could make arrangements to get with Mr. Pentaluna, that would be great. So, is there anybody else who would like to provide any comments to the board during the open public forum? Third and final call, seeing nobody come forward, we'll continue on with our agenda. The next item is hearing item number four, and this is in the matter of the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way on Racine Avenue, County Engineers' Road File Number 1741. Mr. Coles?
Is this the one over here? Okay, thank you. Racine Avenue is a remnant off of Palouse Highway.
Need to speak a little louder and end of the mic.
Lean in.
We're having a little bit of a challenge.
Why don't I move over here?
That'd be great.
Please stand.
Okay?
As long as you know I can do that. Racine Avenue is a portion of right-of-way off of Palouse Highway in the Valley Ford area. You've got a picture up there near Madison. The building you see down to the southwest is the fire station in that area, so if you're familiar with that, that might orient you. The, I think you have a copy of my report. The requested right-of-way to vacate is a triangular piece about 90 feet by 60 feet, right triangle. It appears to be a remainder from when we built a realigned Palouse Highway many years ago. I don't have the date of that, that construction right now. Current use is on unimproved land. There's nothing, there's an approach that goes through there, but nothing, nothing more than that. As far as, as far as roadway, there is none that's in there, and I don't see a valuable use in the future for this right-of-way. We ever intended to, you know, go to a four-lane section or widen the roadway, we would have to acquire much more right-of-way than that. We have adequate right-of-way for the facilities that's there, so my recommendation is that we vacate this, this portion of right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coles. Any questions for Mr. Coles?
Just, just education process for me.
Certainly.
So, so when we vacate that right-of-way, so what happens to that right-of-way?
I think the language is, it goes back from whence it came, and I, we generally don't do that, and we don't do that analysis for folks.
Okay. We just vacate it.
It's more of a title company search and finding out where the original property came from, where it was dedicated from.
Okay.
My guess is it goes to those adjacent properties that are on that side, but that's just a...
Okay, so our, understanding my role, so our role is just to, is to allow or just allow for the vacation of that piece and not bring...
Right, we're giving up, the county is giving up its right-of-way easement rights over that for roadway purposes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good. Thank you. So, at this point, I'll open it up for anybody in the audience who'd like to provide any testimony on hearing item number four, which is the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way on Racine Avenue, County Engineers' Road File Number 1741. Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony, third and final call. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing and look to my fellow commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve hearing item number four in the matter of vacation of a portion of right-of-way of, of, right-of-way on Racine Avenue, County Engineer Road File Number 1741.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. Then, moving on to hearing item number five, this is in the matter of the vacation of a portion of alleyway off River Terrace Road, County Engineers' Road File Number 4690. Mr. Coles?
Thank you again. This is, this is the vacation for River Terrace Alleyway, as you mentioned. This is, this is a portion of right-of-way in Chatteroy neighborhood. You can see the intersection of Highway Two and Chatteroy Road, if you're familiar with the area. That was, that's directly behind what used to be the General Store in Chatteroy. It's been a number of things. I don't think it's currently operating as a general store. Just to the east of Highway Two, River Terrace is the road. You can see the writing down at the bottom of the picture. It's, it's the roadway that came about as, as part of the, when the state realigned Highway Two, that was the remnant frontage road that, that was turned back to the county. Turned back is an odd word, the one that they built originally, but we got it back. And the alleyway in question is a portion of unimproved, again, unimproved roadway, approximately 30 feet wide by 280 feet long. Their right-of-way in question has no connection to other roadways, and, and has no foreseeable connection to other roadways due to it being off to the east of just the location of the road. My recommendation with that absence of, of future need, my recommendation is that we vacate this portion of right-of-way.
Okay? Any questions for Mr. Coles? Then, I will open up the hearing for anybody in the audience who'd like to provide testimony. I do have one individual signed up that wants to provide testimony on this. Again, it'll be a three-minute time period, and I will call Mr. Corey Peterson to the podium.
I'll do it, thank you.
Okay?
I purchased this property in 2005, and I had it surveyed in 2008, and I gave you the paperwork there, did some research on what the property was, and I think in the early 1900s, it was going to be the town of Chatteroy with small lots. I think what I owned would have been about 10 small lots for homes. That's since been abandoned. And on that front page, that first one that I gave you that shows all those blocks, I put a little red block. That's the alleyway that didn't get vacated, but I own the rest of the property to the north, east, and south. It won't go anywhere, it doesn't serve anything. When I had it surveyed, which is the second page you have here, it shows that most of the alley was vacated, but for some reason, this little piece got, was forgotten. I've been working with the assessor's office for a few years trying to get it cleared up, and they, I think it was just an oversight, we forgot to vacate it when we vacated the rest. And then, the third page shows the aerial photo. It's now two lots. It's the old general store that I had my timber company in for 10 years, and then the next lot is a home, a residence that I own. I don't see that little piece being needed for anything. Re-access off of Chatteroy Road and the side county road that was mentioned earlier, I think it was just an oversight that was forgotten and needs to be cleared up. I did have AdVista contact me when this hearing came up, and there were, there's utilities that go through there, so we did an easement, cleared up for gas and power. It's been recorded, I have a copy, which is probably of record now. I think everything's cleared up for it, and I think it was just an oversight, so that's why we, my wife and I asked that this be removed.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
So, any other individuals wanting to provide testimony on hearing item number five? Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony on hearing item number five. Third and final call, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the hearing on hearing item number five and look to my commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve hearing item number five in the matter of vacation of a portion of alleyway off River Terrace Road, County Engineer Road File Number 4690.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. That gets us to hearing item number six in the matter of considering limited access on Ross Creek Road, County Engineers' Road File Number Six. That's your time, you're up. No.
I can go.
This is in the matter of considering limited access on Ross Creek Road, County Engineers' Road File Number 609. Mr. Chad Coles?
Thank you. The petitioner for the, for this limited access has, has told us that they would like to withdraw the limited access proposal, and she has no reason to proceed forward with that.
Okay, so, since the request has been withdrawn, there's no action that the board has to take at this point, or Mr. Macio, do you want us to draw closure to the request?
Chairman French, you ask a good question. Once the, the petition has been submitted for the vacation, there's a question about whether or not you have or don't have jurisdiction. My recommendation, Chairman French, would be to acknowledge the request of the petitioner to withdraw the petition and to terminate, if you will, the limited access request.
Okay, chair is open to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to terminate the request in the matter of considering, considering limited access on Ross Creek Road, County Engineers' Road File Number 609.
Second?
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. Then, moving on to hearing item number seven in the matter of the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way on Lakeview Boulevard, County Engineers' Road File Number 2416. Mr. Coles?
A little, little more involved situation is that this is essentially a replacement of, of right-of-way. I would like to ask Mr. Macio for some guidance here. We haven't been able to perfect the, the agreement to get the new right-of-way portion, and I would, you know, I think the better part of valor would be to postpone this hearing till December 12th, but we could go forward with, I have a recommendation in front of the board that they've seen, and it is valid, I believe. So, we could hear that, and then just leave the, leave the hearing open. Way beyond my can.
Chairman French, if I could, may I ask an inquiry of Mr. Coles?
Please.
Mr. Coles, are you suggesting that the vacation of this particular right-of-way would be subject to the dedication of the additional right-of-way, and under those circumstances, the right-of-way to be vacated wouldn't be necessary for future road purposes?
Correct.
So, they're kind of combined?
Combined, yeah.
Does the same individual own both portions?
I believe there's some additional ownerships involved.
And you need some additional time to work through that?
Right.
I see. And so...
We, I, excuse me, we were, we were, we have the paperwork in place, agreement by all parties, we just haven't been able to get the parties to go there and sign, sign under the dotted line.
And Chairman French, this has been advertised as the vacation day, so the options would be to, at the request of the county engineer, continue until a date certain, number one. Number two, Chairman French, to have the county engineer make his presentation, and then leave the record open for a certain timeframe with the decision to occur a date certain in the future. I think those are the two options, and if you did the latter one, then you would have input on the other right-of-way, I assume. Mr. Coles?
Yes. So, do the, does the board have a preference?
Yeah, let me ask Mr. Macio another question. Is another option available to us that we could go ahead and hear the item tonight, since it's been advertised, noticed, and I'm assuming that people that have an interest in this are here tonight to testify, if there are anybody, and that the board could take an action subject to completion of the signing of the documents by all parties, so that we could basically approve, accept the recommendation of the engineer tonight in the public? Otherwise, if we're going to defer it, we get another hearing, we get another advertisement, we've got all of that routine to go through again.
Chairman French, that is certainly another viable option for the board to consider.
Okay, so the chair is open to any recommendations or suggestions that my fellow commissioners might have about how you might like to proceed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, subject to the signing of all parties involved...
Oh, we've gotta do the hearing still.
Oh.
Yeah, no, what I'm looking for...
You're open to a motion!
No, no, I'm open, I'm open to direction as to which of the three options we have available to us tonight, and so I offered up a third, which is go ahead and proceed with the hearing, take testimony, and then if we approve and accept the recommendation of the engineer, we could go ahead and approve it, subject to him getting all the documents signed.
Okay.
The other alternative would be to defer the action to December 12th and have a hearing that time, or the second, or third option is, we could go ahead and hear the recommendation and then continue, leave the record open, continue the decision for decision-making only to a date in the future.
So, Mr. Coles, you said the only thing not finished is just the signing of the documents?
That's, that's my understanding.
And all the parties involved have agreed, or at least have a handshake agreement kind of on this?
That's my understanding. I haven't been involved in the negotiations on that end.
Okay.
But that's my understanding.
Well, I would think, I mean, if, if signatures are all we're waiting on, and since this was advertised, folks have come down here, I'd be comfortable with moving forward with your, your option of passing it in, just contingent on the signatures.
I'm okay with that, the third option as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, I'll proceed with the, the description of the, and the report sort of stuff.
Please do, very good.
All right, so the, the picture of, we're out at the Clara Lake area of Spokane County, just south of Medical Lake. On the east side of the lake, Clara Lake Road runs around Clara Lake, if you're not familiar with the area, and this is, this is a, an older platted area towards the north end of the lake. The platted right-of-way, did I say one mile? It's about two miles south of Medical Lake. Platted right-of-way that we're concerned with is about 50 feet wide and 720 feet long in the orange, let's go with orange, color on the map. Its current use is unimproved, no, no red bed or semblance of red bed has ever been constructed, to my knowledge. The future need, the right-of-way in question is necessary to provide access to several parcels out there, as you can see in the adjacent parcels. So, and, but the, the proposed right-of-way as we're showing, as shown up above, would replace that adequately for, for county road network. So, my recommendation is essentially to vacate when and if the new right-of-way is dedicated.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Coles?
Just want to make sure I'm clear. So, so the orange, so we're gonna be moving to the yellow, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that Lakeview Boulevard, that doesn't really line up with anything?
Right, currently, the, the, the platted, there's no roadway where Lakeview Boulevard is.
Okay.
But the platted road is, and it does line up currently. So, the, there is slightly less connectivity in that, not less connectivity, but less through movement, but in, considering the type of development and the residential nature of it, I don't believe, in my, my professional opinion, that we need that type of street connection.
Okay.
This is adequate for, for the use that's provided, this will never be a higher level road, it looks like an arterial or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Any other questions? Very good. So, as indicated earlier, this is a hearing item, and so I do not have anybody signed up to testify, so I will make my three calls for anybody in the audience wanting to provide testimony on hearing item number seven. Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony on hearing item number seven, third and final call. Seeing nobody run to this microphone, I'm gonna close the hearing and look to my fellow commissioners for direction.
Okay, so I started to practice this one earlier.
And you did a fine job.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve item number seven on, hearing item number seven, subject to all the parties involved signing the final documents in the matter of a vacation of a portion of right-of-way on Lakeview Boulevard, County Engineer Road File Number 2416.
Second?
Mr. Macio, are you comfortable with the nature of the motion? Anything you want us to add?
What I would ask Chairman French, and maybe the county engineer can suggest, is that, so how long does this go on?
Oh, yeah.
I would ask, should there be a, a date certain that county, that the property's executed document on before a certain date, at which time the vacation is approved, otherwise it's denied? I think there should be some sort of a date certain, board...
Yeah, there should. I agree. To leave it hanging forever isn't fair to any of the parties, I don't think.
So, give us a suggestion, December 31?
Yeah, the, you know, considering the holidays, I'm not in a big hurry, so we could leave it till the end of January, just, just in case people are going places.
Okay.
So, that we give adequate time. So, does that work, Jim, or does it have to be a hearing date?
So, January 30?
January 30.
Okay.
2018.
Will the maker of the motion add that as a friendly amendment to his motion?
Yes, I would like to, that's subject to those papers being signed by January 30th, 5:00 PM.
Second?
Okay, got a second and a, motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please keep it saying aye.
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 Aye, let the record reflect, the motion passes. Then, we have one other item that we're adding to the agenda as a by-leave item, and this is item eight A. It's a resolution, and this is in the matter of certifying to the, oh, I've got, yeah, I've got hearing item number nine. Hearing item number eight, oh, you're right, I, I was so anxious to mark off hearing items, I forgot that one. I guess we ought to come back to hearing item number eight. Yeah, well, okay, fine. Okay, now we're gonna go to hearing item number eight, which is in the matter of considering increasing the tax revenue for 2017 for 2018 in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of Spokane County in conjunction with the General Fund, County Road Fund, and Conservation Futures. Ms. Wallace?
Thank you, Gina. And to establish the, and right now, it'll, it really will be your top ceiling for your levy dollar increases for the three different levies that the county has, which is the county general levy, which provides the support for a lot of our general services that the citizens are familiar with, and then our roads levy, and then our conservation futures So, the resolution, this is not, this is not the budget, that is next Monday is your budget to set. So, this is very simply to, again, set that ceiling for the maximum increase that we're going to, that we could take. Obviously, what you do in the budget process and approve your budget on Monday could be slightly different, but it will not be more than what your, action you're gonna take tonight. So, these are the increased amounts that are in the levy. You can see how they compare to the increased amounts from 2017, and in total, you can see last year we increased more than $7 million. This year, it's proposed to ceiling 5.3 million, and then additional revenue that could still come in after that is related to new construction with wind turbines and state assessed property. Again, just to emphasize, this is only one of the steps that we take in this process, but it is to focus strictly on the property tax levy component of our total budget, but it'll be the lesser of any of these limitations. So, by this resolution tonight, by the budget that we have set for next Monday, or the 101 levy amount limitation, or the statutory limitation. So, the lesser amount of any one of those four is what will actually occur. So, with that, I'll let you proceed with your public hearing.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Wallace? Very good, thank you. Again, this is a hearing item, and I do not have anybody signed up to provide testimony on this, but I will make three calls for anybody who wants to provide testimony on hearing item number eight. Second call for anybody wanting to provide hearing, testimony on hearing item number eight. Third and final call, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the hearing on item number eight and look to my commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring hearing item number eight forward for discussion purposes.
Okay? Need a second.
Second?
Okay, we've got hearing item number eight on the floor for consideration. Mr. Commissioner Kearns?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be voting no on this. On August 15th, when we removed the levy lid lift from the ballot, we did so, or I, I did so because I, I believed it was inappropriate for us to add to the property tax burden that those in our county are gonna be facing due to the McCleary fix that has come from Olympia that'll result in about 87 cents per thousand of assessed value for the vast majority of our citizens, and I still feel it would be inappropriate for us to add to that burden that our citizens are gonna be experiencing this next year.
Okay. Kenny, do you have any comments?
I guess I will be voting for it. As discussed earlier today in our meeting, there has not been a time where we have not asked for this 1% increase, and so it is one of the few ways that we, as the county, can raise any kind of funds. It's about, as we saw, on the general fund side, it's about a half million dollars, and there's, I wanna say there's, our pension costs have gone up, our medical costs have gone up, our workman's comp costs have gone up greater than that half million dollars that we can raise, and we have no effect on those fees that are coming... million dollars that we can raise, and we have no effect on those fees that are coming at us, so, um, I'll be voting for this.
So, uh, Ms. Wallace, could you, uh, go back to your, uh, sheet that, um, you gave us and go to the, um, slide where you were showing the, uh, that one there? So, last year, um, in two thousand and seventeen, our total tax increase to our county taxpayers based upon the, what we levied for these three funds, uh, came to seven million dollars. Is that right?
Correct.
And what we're proposing for two thousand and eighteen is five million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or, uh, one point seven million dollars less than what we, uh, levied for two thousand and seventeen.
To the base levy, yes.
Yes, okay. So, uh, I think we are staying totally consistent with our comments when we took the levy lid lift off, is that, um, we have, through budget reductions and a number of other measures, and because of increased, uh, uh, growth in the community, um, uh, through new construction, have been able to, uh, maintain a level of services consistent with what we've heard in the public hearing process, and still managed to, uh, ask our voters, uh, for less in tax revenue, uh, based upon this schedule than what we asked for in two thousand and seventeen. So, for those reasons, and the fact that, uh, we've had probably one of the most extensive and exhaustive, uh, budget processes that they have been through since I've been here at the county, which is now seven years, um, I think this has been very thoroughly vetted, and, uh, I think that this stays completely consistent with our original goals of trying to, uh, not only provide good customer service and keep our citizens safe and, and, uh, make sure that we're maintaining a relationship with other community partners, uh, but we're also, uh, doing it at a less, um, uh, tax increase than what we had last year. So, uh, for those reasons, I'll be voting in favor of this levy lid, or this levy rate as we move forward, and then we'll look at the budget for next week. So, with that, uh, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by, uh, voting yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, no?
No.
So, let the record reflect, the motion passes by a two zero, uh, two-one vote. That completes item number eight. Now, we get to get to my by-leave item. And, uh, this is a resolution in the matter of certifying to the Spokane County Assessor the amount of taxes levied upon property in Spokane County in two thousand and seventeen for collection in two thousand and eighteen as required by R C W eighty-four point five two point zero seven zero, uh, exclusive of Spokane County. And, uh, so, Mr. Macio, do you want to just give us a basic description for the benefit of the public of what we're doing here? Then I'll call for the, a motion and a vote.
Uh, thank you, Chairman French. This is simply an administrative item. The state law provides that each taxing district, or, uh, junior taxing district, provide to the Board of County Commissioners, honor before November thirtieth, the amount of taxes which they want to levy in two thousand and seventeen for collection in two thousand and eighteen. When we receive those items, Chairman French, from these junior taxing districts, we give them to the Spokane County Assessor's Office. They then prepare a sheet which identifies all the amounts with the junior taxing districts are going to levy in two thousand and seventeen for collection in two thousand and eighteen. So, what we're doing this evening is acknowledging what the junior taxing districts have requested us to do in the form of a formal resolution. Uh, this is not a public hearing item, and I would just hand this item to, uh, Commissioner Cuny, and, uh, the motion would be simply to, uh, approve the certifications which have been submitted to the county commissioners and put in the form of a document by the Spokane County Assessor's Office.
Okay?
Assessor's Office, thank you.
Very good, so the chair is open to, for motion? Either one?
We can do it from this one. Mr. Chair, move to approve item number eight A in the matter of certifying the county assessors the amount of taxes levied upon property in Spokane County in two thousand and seventeen for collection in two thousand and eighteen as required by R C W eighty-four point five two point zero seven zero, exclusive of Spokane County.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes by a three-zero vote. That then gets us to our last open public forum. I do not have anybody in the audience signed up for the final public forum. I'll, uh, make three calls. Anybody who wants to provide, uh, testimony at our open public forum? Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony. Third and final call for anybody wanting to provide testimony at our final open public forum. With that, then, ladies and gentlemen, we have completed all of the items, uh, coming before the Board of County Commissioners this evening. Thank you very much for joining us. Hope...